Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of the Sterling Heights City Council to order. Please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials. Grant them courage and wisdom to do what is right for all citizens. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Ms. Riska. Can we please have the roll call?
Mayor Taylor.
Here.
Mrs. Saroski.
Here.
Mrs. Kosky.
Present.
Mr. Radke.
Present.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Present.
Mr. Shannon.
Present.
Mrs. Zarco.
Present.
Thank you, council. We need approval of the agenda tonight.
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Kosky.
Moved to approve the agenda.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? No discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda tonight is a report from our city manager, Mark Vanderpoel. Mr. Vanderpoel.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to remind everyone that Columbus Day, as many of you know, is on Monday, October 8th, and all city offices will be closed for an in-service training day for our staff. There'll be no interruption and refuse collection, however, so you won't notice any problem there or any delay. And also, 'tis the season. Everyone's going to be raking leaves soon, and I wanted to remind you that it is against city ordinance to rake leaves into the street. Please make sure that they're bagged in paper bags and set out at the curb for collection. And also, on a piece of good news, a collaboration of ten fire departments has been awarded $1.1 million through a grant by FEMA's Assistance for Firefighters program to purchase integrated conferencing equipment. And we're very involved in trying to obtain this grant. And with the grant, all fire departments will have the capability to train, collaborate, and communicate without leaving their fire stations by creating a regionalized, uniformed, multi-agency training communication platform. Along with Sterling Heights, the participating departments in the grant award are Bloomfield Township, McComb Township, City of Rochester, Shelby Township, Springfield Township, City of Warren, West Bloomfield, Wixom, and Southfield. The project will connect ten fire departments with thirty-four stations and six hundred and seventy-three firefighters. And I should mention, there are already thirty-six other fire departments who have similar technology now, in addition to a number of states that we'll now be able to connect with as well. So I wanted to highlight the grant. It's great that we're able to obtain this. It's wonderful technology. It'll certainly make us more efficient, and we'll be able to improve our operations by sharing best practices and learning of other best practices in the fire industry. I wanted to compliment our Assistant Fire Chief, Ed Miller, who is very involved in getting the grant, along with our Fire Chief, Chris Martin. And also, moving on to another exciting update. Mayor, if you don't mind, I would like to call on the Police Chief, Dale Jawo-Jakowski, to introduce the newest members of the Sterling Heights Police Department.
Yes, exciting night. Normally, I'm up here introducing human people to join our department, but tonight, they're not human. They're the four-legged variety. The Sterling Heights Police Department will be adding two new K-9 units to the Police Department, bringing the total to three total K-9 units for the city of Sterling Heights with the longtime K-9 handler and nationally-certified K-9 instructor Officer Rich Hines. He's retiring his dog Chase. The department has decided to replace Chase and add a third K-9 unit, so we'll be back to three K-9 units. The two new K-9 units are a year-and-a-half-old German Shepherds. They were purchased from a law enforcement kennel in Pennsylvania. The two new K-9 handlers are, they just got announced a couple weeks back through a very selective process. This is a highly sought-after position within the Police Department, and these positions do not open up very often. So our two newest K-9 handlers are Officer Ryan Brothen with his K-9 Groot from the movies Guardian of the Galaxy, Groot, and Officer Jeremy Walliman with his K-9 Ernie. K-9s Groot and Ernie will be joining K-9 Ivy and her handler, Officer Darren Steele. We are fortunate, ladies and gentlemen, they have two nationally-certified K-9 handlers and instructors here in Sterling Heights, and they will personally train the dogs for ten weeks. Then the dogs will spend an additional five weeks with their new handlers. These K-9s will be trained in tracking, narcotic detection, and patrol work. The K-9s are also an excellent public relations tool with all of our community events. As Mayor Taylor said in the State of the City comments last week, we can buy tools, we can buy thermal imagers, we can buy body cameras, we can buy the latest and greatest laser and radar units, but nothing, nothing has been created to replace a dog's nose, period. There is no replacement. So these dogs serve an absolute purpose, and we are so thankful for the council, for your support and the funding to get us back up to these three dogs. So with that, we wish K-9 Chase a happy and well-deserved retirement, and we welcome our newest four-legged friends to the force. Come on in, guys. This is Officer Walliman with Ernie, and they are young dogs, and they're ready to go. And Officer Brothen with Groot right there, Officer Steele with Blitz, and Officer Hines with Chase.
No, Ivy.
Ivy, I'm sorry. Yeah, wrong dog. Ivy, the replacement dog. I know, I don't know what I'm doing. Yeah, so there's our three newest dogs and K-9 Chase. We wish you the best in retirement, and thank you, Officer Hines, for all of your work, and truly has started this K-9 division almost single-handedly. And regionally, Officer Hines is known as a master instructor and does so much training with other department dogs. So we wish you good luck, and thank you, Officer, thank you to Chase for all the hard work over the years. Thank you, Rich. Appreciate it. So I'd like to give him a welcome. Counsel, if you want to come down and say hello to the dogs, it's up to you.
Welcome aboard, as we do with everyone.
Yes, we do it with the humans. We gotta do, we gotta be fair.
Well, veterans are not quite trained.
Want to get around to a picture somehow?
Yeah, many of us all say that your dogs are...
Lots of work.
I think you've got two boys.
Oh, they know.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Vanderpoel. We have two presentations tonight, so we'll move on to our first presentation, and this is the 2018 Beautification Awards. A presentation from the Chairman of the Beautification Commission, Gary Isom. Mr. Isom.
I'm Gary Isom, Chairperson for the Sterling Heights Beautification Commission. Tonight, it gives me great pleasure to present our 2018 Beautification Awards. The Sterling Heights Beautification Commission's mission is to encourage all city residents and property owners to preserve and enhance the beauty of public and private properties. One of the ways we do that is through our annual awards ceremony, where we honor those who go above and beyond in beautifying their Sterling Heights properties. Tonight, we carry on that tradition here before this body. We thank you for welcoming this presentation as we showcase our residents and business leaders' dedication to making Sterling Heights a more beautiful place to live, work, and play. For the past five months, the Beautification Commission welcomed nominations from the citizens who wish to recognize a Sterling Heights property for outstanding beauty resulting from the planting of annuals and perennials. The Commission met and reviewed photos taken from more than sixty nominated homes, businesses, and churches. Commissioners judge nominations and select only superior properties that had that wow factor when seen from the curb. Commissioners selected winners based on overall beauty, aesthetics, and artistic use of color. Awards tonight will be presented in the categories of commercial properties, multifamily properties, churches, and single-family residential homes. A best-of-the-best recipient will be honored in each of those categories. I'd like to thank all the beautification commissioners here tonight for their dedication to this program. When I call your name, please stand. Co-chair Sharon Mason, Henrietta Pacheski, Anita Ponco, Manny Gonzalez, Nancy Kajek, Ruzan Shinzing, and Joyce Thai. At this time, I'd like to invite Mayor Michael Taylor and members of the City Council to join me in presenting the 2018 Sterling Heights Beautification Awards.
Thank you very much, Gary. I am unfortunately feeling a little bit under the weather today, so I'm going to stand back here so I don't infect, you know, the...
Sixty, sixty of our residents, yes.
So Mrs. Saroski will take over for me. Thank you.
To the award recipients here tonight, when your name is called, please come forward to receive your award. Photograph of the Honored Address will be shown on Sterling Heights TV and here on the video screen.
DeSanto Travel Center. Multifamily Properties. Nottingham Cove. Shoal Creek. Rodgate Manor. Laurel Valley Apartments. Churches. Residential Properties. Bridget and Jeffrey Bolton. The Meschini Family. Fred and Ann Gibson. 14939 Congress Drive. Teresa DeRosa. Matthew Wood and Kenyon Clegg-Horn. 4867 Burke Court. Barbara Buchanan. 42517 Sycamore Drive. Siri Shiuhu. 42247 Sycamore Drive. Dominico and Loretta Cognetto. 13857 Brookside Drive. Dennis and Kathleen Bomarito. 13869 Brookside Drive. Donna Madonna. 43466 Interlaken Drive. Michael and Deanna Forrest. 4845 Fifteen Mile Road. Joe and Pat Wagner. 8459 Leslie Drive. Chuck Nay. 8811 Clinton River Road. Greg and Susanna Schindler. 11242 Eighteen Mile Road. Slavka Milinkovic. 4466 Eighteen and a Half Mile Road. Robert and Judy Fleming. Manuel and Maria Gonzalez. Ellen Alond. John and Miesen Ebert. Cheryl Burella. 34516 Clearview Circle. Hoyt and Nancy Bush. Denise and Wally Bronson. Melinda Clark. 13582 Trotters Lane. Sienna Molet. 41215 Fieldview Drive. Suzanne Calcaterra. 8856 Burke Hill Drive. Gianina Kokora. 8821 Riverland Drive. Rick and Gail Strohne. 14267 Lake Shore Drive. Sharon Mason. Monica Gomolka. 34801 Valley View. Mary Santino Polakowski and Benjamin Polakowski. 35615 Rainbow Drive. Craig and Mary Palowski. 14327 Pedo Borough Drive. Edward Carroll. 11336 Village Drive. Bev McQuaid. 11125 Grenada Drive. Paul and Georgia Osack. 38978 Marble Drive. Kim McQuaid. 43243 Chardonnay Drive. Jason and Elisabetta Stupera. 37281 Belcrest Drive. Solar and Sarmad Mati. 39312 Duran Drive. Lorenzo and Linda Howard. 34401 Amsterdam Drive. Ted and Bev Petty. 2170 Oak Crest Road. Wad Yousis. 37512 Dodge Park Road. Diane Greer. 2215 Camel Drive. Darryl Maroney. John Bingham Jr. Terry Consiglio. 39078 Ledgate Drive. Ann Schultz. 13904 Heatherwood Court. And now, for the best of the best. Commercial Properties. Multifamily Properties. Churches. Residential Properties. Kenneth and Barbara Milczynski.
Has helped in making Sterling Heights a better place to live. We do have a suggested action, council?
Can I get one second?
Oh, yes. Sorry, Mr. Isom.
No.
I just wanted to thank everyone for attending tonight's Beautification Awards, and I'd also like to extend a special thank you to Eckwards Greenhouse for the generous donation of those $25 gift recipients. I know you spend much more money than $25, but at least it's a start for next year. Please remain seated so that City Council may formally recognize tonight's recipients.
Thank you very much, Mr. Isom, and to the entire Beautification Commission for all your hard work year long. Counsel, we have a suggested action?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Zarco.
Resolved to individually and collectively recognize the 2018 Beautification Award winners and thank them for the dedication and effort in making their properties, neighborhoods, and the city of Sterling Heights a more beautiful place to live, work, and play. Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion, council? I think the results speak for themselves. Thank you very much. So we'll vote and give you one more big round of applause. With all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations. So at this time, we'll take a five-minute recess. At 7:25, we'll come back on the record at 7:30 to allow time for the chamber to clear out. Thank you again. We stand and discuss. All right, I'd like to call this meeting back to order. We have another presentation tonight, and this is a presentation in our Nice Neighbor Award. And normally, we have a council member present this, but for this special circumstance, I'm going to call up to the podium retired police captain Aaron Burgess to make this presentation. And it is, I believe, the first nice neighbor we've had in quite some time. So, we welcome you back, Captain Burgess, and thank you for being here.
Well, thank you very much. If you'd like to stand right over here for me. Mayor Taylor, members of city council, Mr. Vanderpoel, thank you very much for allowing me to come back and present this Nice Neighbor Award. I thought tonight what we would do is I would talk a little bit about the project that we're working on out in our park system on our mountain bike trail. We do have some photos so that people can see exactly what it is that we're doing to help make Sterling Heights the recreational venue that it's become. And then I'd talk a little bit about the men that made this happen. What we've been working on out in the Clinton River Park System since about 2008 is a, one of the very first mountain bike trails that was recognized by the Michigan Mountain Bike Association, then later the Clinton River Area Mountain Bike Association. We've worked extremely hard to make this area in here viable and an attractive area to come mountain biking. With Stony Creek working very hard to do a machine-built trail system which will be nationally recognized, we're starting to see a huge influx of mountain bikers and dog walkers and trail runners. So, we're trying to do our part to make this even more attractive, to draw more people here to the city. What we looked at was an area that is constantly flooding. It is built over an old farmer's dump site, and we were having, constantly having barbed wire and glass and those type of things coming up through the trail. So, what we worked with was two trail coordinators, Phil Blake and Ed Van Slambrook, worked again with the Boy Scouts of America, and we decided to make this an Eagle Scout project with Marco Constantino. Over the course of 18 days, in excess of a total of 500 cumulative hours, two of those days were over 12 hours. If anybody remembers those 110-degree heat index days, yeah, we were out there feeding the mosquitoes. This bridge was one of the most ambitious projects we've ever had. It's over 114 feet long. It's an S-curved between some trees over a flood area, and then we built over 150 yards of new trail to make it that much more enjoyable. The trail, over $3,000. We were very lucky. We had monies donated by the Sterling Heights Rotary, again, our community foundation, Joe Burns from Back to the Beach, and an unbelievable fundraising effort by Marco. We'll get more to that. If we could perhaps show everybody a little bit about what we're working in. As you can see, this is the reason we're building a bridge. We have all our volunteers, and two days, we had over 25 volunteers out there. Marco's very happy to be out there. We'll talk more about the Eagle Scouts. This is the start of the foundation for the bridge, leading up by Beresford Court. You can see how the walls are banked. And that's how we started building it out there. That gentleman's about 70 years old, too, so anybody can go out there and do this.
That's my next-door neighbor.
Rob's a great guy. Now, Phil Blake is lead trail coordinator on this. Phil personally has over 200 hours invested in this, from site planning, clearing it out, working with Home Depot, and making sure that we had everything there. He worked hand-in-hand with Marco to make this an Eagle Scout project. Ed spent many evenings over prepping the bridges and working on things. Without these three individuals, this project would never have happened. To say a little bit about Marco, I have done several Eagle Scout projects. I've come to expect great things from the Boy Scouts. The Eagles are always awesome to work with. But Marco, far and above, exceeded all of my expectations. I've never had an Eagle Scout that wanted ambitiously to sit and go over to Home Depot to buy supplies, or do a budget, or build up things on computers, show up when he should be out doing football, or video games, or, no, you probably don't do video games. All the things that young men like to do, he instead, he was working with Phil and Ed to make sure this project took place. Just to let you know, very few scouts ever make it to the Eagle. Even fewer make it at the age of 14. Marco did that. Absolutely an impressive young man to work with. Mr. Vanderpoel, I believe it was 2008 or 2009, sir, you and I were sitting down and we were talking about how to make this trail work. How are we going to do it? Where's the money coming from? How is it going to be billed? How are we going to sustain this trail? Who's going to keep it up? Because it's all volunteer labor. And we sat and we talked, and we said, well, we've got these different chapters and things coming up. Well, time has marched on, I'm getting a little bit older, this is starting to get a little more gray. But we have somebody here now that we've worked with, that Phil and Ed have taught, that wants to take this over. We are going to have another trail coordinator, and that's going to be in Marco. So, we took a little thing together, and we made sure that we got him the study guide so that he knows how to build good trails for you and keep your park system up. Ladies and gentlemen, if I could get a nice round of applause for this young man and my City council, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much for this Nice Neighbor Award to be presented. If you'd like to come down for some photos, I'm sure Marco would love to have a couple of pictures. I understand, sir, you're sick?
I'll come down for a picture. I won't shake your hand. I'm sure you, we need you around to be building these trails. So, council, let's go join the, down on the podium.
Hold on, let's wait over here, let's get a couple of pictures with Phil and get a shot with the city council.
Good job. 14, she'll do about 18, right?
Awesome job.
I'm impressed, I only made the Star Scout.
Congratulations on your Eagle Scout and on the bridge project.
Thanks for that.
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. We're really, really proud of you again.
Congratulations. Thank you so much for your work.
Yeah, awesome. Thank you.
Come on, move back here, Michael. And guys, we'll go back here.
Just don't quit.
Come on, I heard it on me, or not me, it's Cory, sorry.
Hey, it's good to see you. See you guys.
I haven't seen you in a while.
My golf, there was.
You can golf, you can handle it.
Mayor Taylor?
All right, thank you. Mrs. Zarco, we do have a suggested action?
Well, I'm going to let somebody else make the suggested action because I just did the other, retired Captain Burgess?
Don't leave yet.
Don't leave. Because the only name I didn't see on there was Captain Burgess's name, and I'm sure that he had equal time into that project. So, if we could recognize him maybe as a nice neighbor at the next meeting, and we'll nominate you because you didn't nominate yourself, but I'm sure you had a lot to do with that project as well.
Thank you, Mrs. Zarco.
Thank you.
Misses Saroski.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. Resolve to present Phil Blake, Marco Constantino, Ed Van Slambrook, and Paul McAllister with the Nice Neighbor Award in recognition for their efforts to assist the community and contributions in making Sterling Heights overall quality of life second to none.
Support's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Saroski?
Yes, I would like to say something because, one, that was my next-door neighbor who's got me into biking again after all these, probably 40 years. But I have ridden on that trail, I've ridden on that bridge. It's wonderful, and it's so nice to be able to just, you know, jump on your bike and be in nature and be out there where things are quiet and peaceful and centered. So, again, thank you, Marco. Thank you, gentlemen, for all your hard work. It's a beautiful place, and I'm thrilled to be where we are in Sterling Heights. Thank you.
Mr. Radke?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to congratulate Marco on a well-done project. I only made it to Star Scout myself, and at 14 to be an Eagle Scout, that shows a determination and hard work that I think is second to none. Thank you so much for improving our city. I'm sure this isn't going to be the last thing you do. It's going to be wonderful to watch, so thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else, council? With no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Congratulations one more time, Marco. Everything that you do for Sterling Heights. Next item on our agenda tonight is the consent agenda. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on any item on tonight's consent agenda? If not, council, we need a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Kosky?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Support.
It's been moved and supported with no discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. That concludes that portion of our agenda tonight. We'll move on to communications from citizens. Is there anyone who'd like to speak on any item not on tonight's agenda?
Good evening. My name's Harry Marshallons. Mayor, council members, Mr. Vanderpoel. I wanted to mention tonight, because normally I come up here and I've got something to complain about, but I got to say right now, the way things are going in the city, kudos to all of you. You've done a great job. The roads are coming along real well. Cars aren't rattling apart, and things seem to be going real well. And I got to tell you how impressed I was with all those police dogs in here, and no council members or the mayor was not arrested for possession of any drugs. There's a lot of cities where that wouldn't happen. So, congratulations, all of you. Thank you very much for the job you're doing.
Thank you, Mr. Marshallons, just Tylenol tonight. Thank you, next, sir.
Hi, council, thank you for allowing me to speak today. Unfortunately, I tried to contact your local clerk about this issue. Unfortunately, I didn't receive a reply from it, so I'd like to bring this to your attention just so my comments can be heard. My name is Mike Van Hall, and I was a member of the Macomb County recount team for the SMART proposal. During this process, I had the opportunity to recount some of the absentee voters that came from Sterling Heights. While doing so, I noticed some areas of improvement that I wanted to pass on to you so that may address them in future elections. What I noticed was that in the poll book, some of the original seal numbers were not recorded in the poll book, particularly for precincts 43, 44, 45. Fortunately, the county staff ruled that we could recount these precincts as the ballot bag seal did match the seal that was provided. There were some errors involved with processing duplicate votes. In a couple of precincts, the same duplicate ballot number was issued multiple times, so we would have a sequence of, say, duplicate one, duplicate two, then it would be duplicate two again, duplicate three, duplicate three. In one precinct, there was an instance where the original ballot was not labeled as such. This posed some difficulty in verifying the duplicated ballots during the recount. Furthermore, there were multiple instances where portions of the original ballot was not recorded on the duplicate ballot. For instance, I noticed in precinct 42 that a precinct worker copied the partisan section up front, but did not copy the vote in the proposal section. On the back of the same ballot, the worker did not copy over a precinct delegate vote. There was also an instance where the ballots were not duplicated correctly. In particular, I recalled an issue in precinct 44 where a military or overseas ballot had an issue. The original ballot indicated a vote for one candidate. However, the duplicated ballot was marked with a blank write-in vote underneath the originally selected candidate. Please be ensure that this is no way a criticism of you, your staff, or the election workers. During the elections, I serve as a precinct chair in Macomb Township, so I can appreciate the amount of time and effort that goes into conducting the elections. It's only my hope that we can use this opportunity to improve the procedures and continue to ensure the integrity of the election process. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you very much, sir. If you want to leave your contact information with our clerk, I'm sure she can get a response to you.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you. Anyone else under communications from citizens?
Hello, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Mr. Vanderpoel. Thank you for your time. I just wanted to say for our people in our city that ever have questions, concerns, whatever their issue is, please reach out to these people. I'm here to tell you that when I do, it is always welcomed, promptly answered. I came to the mayor and Mr. Vanderpoel on August 30th about a concern in my neighborhood, and by that Tuesday, the day after Labor Day, most of the issue was resolved. I have a few pictures I'm going to share in a minute of the thing that wasn't. But truly, I so appreciate your response and helping. And I will say, too, that I've asked questions, and I don't always like the answer, but at least you answer me, so I appreciate that, too. A couple of weeks ago, I watched the last council meeting, and I have to say Sterlingfest, oh my God, it was just so awesome. I love, I love our city. To see all the people come out, part of me was thinking, why try and fix something that's not broke? However, I do like the fresh eyes and thinking of new things. I want to say for my opinion, I think introducing craft beer, that would be good enough, but alcohol, I don't drink at all, so, but I just don't see any good coming of that myself. Extending the hours, I did hear somebody, an ex-council person's head explode when that was suggesting. was suggested, because I'm sure he was at home listening. I could see maybe on Saturday, but it's a lot of hours that everybody's putting in. It just seemed like that would be kind of hard. And Sunday, I don't see that at all because, you know, everybody's tearing down, getting ready for Monday. Again, just my opinions. And the police presence, having the planes close, there was a remark about the amount of money spent, and maybe we didn't need all that. I strongly disagree with that. Even though there's no guarantee what will happen in our safety, I definitely felt such a safe presence with all of the police officers that I saw, and I didn't even know they were playing close, so that makes me feel even better. There was a lot of people, and everybody, for the most part, was just happy and having fun, so it just is good to go, to come to our city and feel safe. So, yeah, lastly, I'd like to share pictures. I live in the Sterling Hunt Club. It is on the southwest corner of 19 and Ryan, and the entrance off of 19 Mile, which is North Hampton, on either side, they have still not finished the work. The cement is not complete. There is a couple of big cement boulders that I'm here to tie you when it snows and the snowplows come through. Good luck with that because it will get hit. One of them's really close to the street, so, but it's just, it's not finished. I have no idea where I'm at because I'm not good with this.
Oh, okay.
I gotta take my glasses off. I also can't see. All right, so this right here is just, it is 19 Mile, but this is where you can see the cement is not complete, big drop-off. Here's a different view of the same thing. And then the whole edge where they did the new cement is just like this. There is like at least a three-inch drop the whole way. They just need to come through, first of all, pick up their crap, and then fill in the dirt. That's all we're asking for. It looks terrible, not to mention, like I said, the cement. I think that's going to be a problem come winter. So, if somebody could please come and tell Golly to please finish their job, that would be greatly appreciated.
All right, thank you. And we will get somebody out there right away. Anyone else on communications from citizens? If not, close that portion, go under reports from city administration, Mr. Vanderpoel.
Nothing further, mayor.
Mr. Kaczyuski, anything tonight?
Nothing tonight, mayor.
Council, any new reports, new business? Mrs. Saroski.
Okay, I'll start tonight. So, I wanted to congratulate our fire department for writing and being awarded this grant. As mentioned before, Assistant Chief Miller did do an awesome job. I know that the chief also helped him, but Assistant Chief Miller did do most of it, so congratulations, because this is a communication device that they need both with themselves and with other disciplines or other departments. And that will then allow us to always have a better, you know, with better communication becomes safety. And safety is what keeps us all here. That's why we like being in Sterling Heights, the sixth safest city in the country. And then also, the dogs are wonderful, so thank you all, residents, for supporting us when we think that this is what our vision is, and we're happy to have you also support us with that. And really, that's all I have, so thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Saroski. Anyone else, council?
Mayor Taylor?
Mrs. Schmitt.
I just want to remind all the residents that this Sunday is the fire department's open house over at Station 4. I believe it starts at 10:00. There's a ceremony at noon. Everything is free. They have equipment that the kids can, you know, shoot the hoses and have fun. There's usually cider and donuts. It's usually a great time for the bees to show up and chase us all around. But overall, a wonderful day, wonderful afternoon to spend with your family, so come out to Station 4, right there on 15, across from Sterling Heights High School. Nothing further.
Absolutely, all right. Thank you, Mrs. Schmitt. Anyone else? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
It's been moved. Support.
It's been moved and supported with no discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you for coming out tonight.